August 25th. I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:30 PM. Clerk Posey, will you please, I'm sorry, will do the pledge.
I do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now Clerk Posey will call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Your support?
I support Charlie's motion.
Is there any discussion on the bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
On the outlay to Bulldog Records Management shredding of boxes and the amount of $1,246.98, I have a question regarding whether or not we're required by law to shred those, all those documents, and if not, what percentage are required by law to be shredded? So anyone can answer that?
I can sort of help you with that.
Go for it.
The shredding, the mass shredding that we do that we're budgeted for is based on the record retention schedule, so those boxes are dated and scheduled for shredding.
So there's no legal requirement that we shred them? We could just recycle or dump them?
No, they're required to be shredded.
By what statute or regulation?
I would have to refer to Chuck, who's not here right now.
Okay.
But I can get that, I can get that answered for you.
If I may, Mr. Supervisor. Typically, that's according to the schedule set forth by the Michigan State Library, and it advises which ones should be shredded, which ones can just be discarded in the timeline upon which they need to be done. So I would surmise, and this is surmise, and Mr. Pierce is very on top of this, that it's based upon that schedule.
All right, well, Madam Clerk, could look into it. I'm gonna just vote based on the representation that there's a requirement that we do so. Because, and how often, I guess the next question is, how often of a cycle, if you know, Madam Clerk, do we incur the expense of this amount over $1,000? Is it every six months or every?
Well, currently, right now, we have a major scanning and shredding project going on with the township. So we are shredding documents for building and other departments that have personal information on them. So the shredding goes based on the schedule that the state puts forward, and then Chuck also has separate projects for shredding with other departments, so he tries to do it in mass quantities at the same time, based on the retention schedule.
Okay, so we don't know, do you know what the budget is overall for this? I know it's a minor thing, but I want to make sure that the residents are not shredding documents that aren't required to be shredded. I understand about personal information, but I want to make sure we're not just shredding everything.
No, that's not the intention. The information that we get from building has specific information, sometimes social security numbers, addresses, personal information, so we make it a point to shred those documents and keep them separate from the others. Chuck goes through all the file, all the boxes. He removes documents that don't necessarily need to be shredded, but he also verifies, makes sure that information that should be, remain personal and confidential and shredded is shredded. So he goes through every box before they're shredded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any more discussion on the bill run? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette to approve the bill run. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the previous meeting minutes from August 11th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the previous meeting minutes. That motion passes unanimously. All right, now we have public comment. This is on agenda items only. If anyone wishes to speak, they may, in the room, they may approach the podium. Anyone who is participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called on. Nobody in here? Mr. Ivanowski, nobody?
No one was just to talk right now?
So moving on. Next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items? So we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda items. That motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to new business. First item up is a request to award the bid for the after-hours answering service for the Macomb Township Water and Sewer Department to Gilson Call Center Services at a rate of $200 per month, plus a one-time fee of $115 for a two-year contract total of $4,950. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. Little background on this, we had learned early part of the summer that our current answering service was gonna close the doors, so thus the need to, with the aid of Janet Solomon, our purchasing specialist, put on our RFP. And as you can see through her memo, we had 43 notices, 20 plant takers, five bids received, and we are recommending the low bid, which is Gilson, in the amount of $4,950 and zero cents. Recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the answering service contract to Gilson Call Center Services. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to approve the balancing payment for pay estimate number two to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC, 2021 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and CCT Investigation. It's project number 0249-0215, in the amount of $35,254.88.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Ken, and Board members. Little history on this. As you recall, I was in front of you last board meeting on the 11th of August for this same pay cert. It was discovered after the meeting that there was a typo on the pay cert, and we truly did not pay them the correct amount. So what this item is, is basically a little bit of housekeeping, if you will, and cleaning up an error from the last meeting, and this will be in the amount of $35,254.88. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to pay the, to pay pay estimate number two to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $35,254.88. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10. We have a request to approve the contract modification number three for the 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation, which is the final closeout and final contract modification for project number 0249-0163, which is a reduction of $107,235.36. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Board, again. Little history on this one as well. This is for the contract that was in place last fall, late summer, early fall. This was with Insetraform. As stated, this will be a reduction in this contract of $107,235.36. As that contract went on, we discovered that some of the lining could not be done as previously planned or thought out, so we just removed those items from that contract, and now they're gonna be in the upcoming contract that we're gonna look to have approved later in the summer here, and hopefully get that worked on this fall. So this'll be, I'll call it a little bit of housekeeping and reduction in this contract, and we'll put this contract to closure.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions? Or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the contract modification on project number 2049-0163, which is a reduction in the amount of $107,235.36. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, which is a request to approve the final estimate on the final balancing contract modification number three for the 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining, project number 0249-0163, in the amount of $86,165.69. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Board. And this is just the final pay cert on this contract, previously stated, and this will close out this contract from last fall, and we are recommending approval. Thank you.
Any questions? Or discussion? Okay, hearing none. A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to pay the final pay estimate to Insetraform Technologies USA in the amount of $86,165.69. That motion passes unanimously. And item 12 is a request to engage Utility Financial Solutions LLC to update the Macomb Township Water and Sewer Department's five-year financial projection and one-year rate design in the amount of $17,000. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor and Board members. This will be a request by Water and Sewer to sign or enter into a letter of engagement contract, I should say contract, with UFS in the amount of $17,000 to do this rate design, which will involve water rate design as well as wastewater rate design, and Water and Sewer is recommending approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions and comments. On September 25th, 2019, this same matter came before the Board. It was a vote of seven with no dissents or nays. The five-year capital improvement plan was developed. We're one year into that five-year capital improvement plan. I suppose what Ms. Lund intends to do is to supplement that by making a five-year plan, projecting for a full five years from this year fiscal year. I would think that the mere supplementation, unless there's been major changes, and maybe someone from Water and Sewer can make a comment, that basically 80% of the work is just gonna remain static as to what was already projected. Also, I have a criticism that it was not put out to bid. The amount charged for these services was $7,500 per task previously. This represents a 13% increase since May of 2020, and I don't know whether or not there's been any explanation given for the increase, given the fact that Ms. Lund intends, from my reading of the materials in the Board Packet, to appear virtually to make her presentation. Is there anyone who can answer any of those questions or concerns?
Mr. Wanglin.
Well, she will, she will look at the ongoing CIP program, which is constantly in motion, if you will, in flux. I think, as Jim can chime in here as well, one of the projects in our CIP plan, we got zero bids on it, you know, so that'll factor in. A couple of the other projects that we had in our CIP plan for this year, we've decided to put on the sidelines and rebid on this upcoming year because of some pretty substantial bids we did receive. We were advised by the engineering firm of AEW that they were considerably higher than the estimate projected, so, I mean, she will look at the ongoing CIP program, yes. As far as the explanation as to why she went up, or UFS went up 13%, you know, I guess I did not ask for that, for an explanation.
All right.
So if I, I'm just gonna add a little bit from what I know, and most of what I know is from Jerry. But having sat through a presentation from Ms. Lund, I think you sat through a similar one at a different time.
I've sat through several of them.
The information, so maybe I'm, this is basically just for the general public, the calculation of our water rates is an issue that's much more complex than I realized as a citizen, having come in and learned it for the first time. Ms. Lund has a 100-page-deep spreadsheet that has all kinds of calculations that factor in, and all boils down to what our rates, she recommends our rates end up being. One of the reasons it's so important to have someone of her knowledge and skill level to help us with those rates is because there are legal consequences for indiscriminately or even just making a mistake on what you charge your rates. I think, having witnessed the litigation in surrounding communities, it's something we are attempting to avoid, and in fact, after Shelby Township was sued and settled for, I believe was $6 million, they engaged Ms. Lund and her company to help them correct their problems. So I just want everyone to understand that this is not a simple process. It's very lengthy, very complex, and they put a lot of time and energy and effort into helping us develop the correct rate.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, this is a service which should have been put out to bid. There are other companies that perform this service. I know personally, as a member of the public, viewing the water issue over the years, it was done at least one time, or several times, by Mr. Van Tiflin. It was also done by a representative from Plant Moran, that was one of the reasons why I indicated that Plant Moran, giving them their due, even though they were not the lowest qualified bidder, on the accounting, financial audit work, that they made that presentation in years past. And then, for some reason, we're stuck with a vendor now, and I shouldn't say stuck, we have settled on a vendor, Ms. Lund from UFS, and we haven't bid that work out ever since. And I suppose the argument can be made that we know what we got, we don't know what we're going to get. However, I would note that my understanding is, most of this information is fed up through the capital improvement plan from our own department heads and employees. So I question why we couldn't do it ourselves in-house, which maybe Mr. Van Tiflin was in, through the chair in years past, did we do it ourselves?
We did do it ourselves. When I was a consultant, I did it on behalf of the township. But we've gotten to a point with water and sewer rates where it's such a hot-button issue that I don't think that we have anybody here on staff or with one of our consultants that I would be comfortable with recommending to the Board that they handle it. There's a reason that we've gone with Ms. Lund. This is what she does every day, and she's very familiar with the issues that are associated with these complicated matters.
I have no further comment.
Mr. Chair, if I could. Jerry, to you, how did the price for this upcoming projection and rate design get settled down with Ms. Lund? Was it?
There was no negotiation, if that's what you're asking me. I asked for a letter of engagement. She sent me something, you know, if, there was no bantering or negotiation, no. And obviously, I've presented it to this body and for their consideration.
Okay. And what are the timelines involved with this, with engaging a firm to handle this? Is it something we should do in the next month, next two months, week?
Typically, we address water and sewer rates the last meeting in September. That's historically how it's been.
Is there a reason for that that you're aware of?
Well, the rate increases that we've been given from GLWA and the county will start to kick in, if we don't, are going to kick in, I should say. So we need, we need to make some sort of decision here, you know.
When will those rates kick in?
In the, in the upcoming month of September.
Oh, in September?
Yep.
And so will Ms. Lund complete her projections and so forth? Is there a timeline for her?
Well, that's something I would speak to her in the morning about, you know, and request a deadline, if you will. You know, if it doesn't happen till the first meeting in October, you know, so be it, I think we'll be fine. But, you know, I'm gonna shoot for the last meeting in September, like we have in years past.
So Ms. Lund did not indicate what the rate was based on, a certain number of hours, the rate is just up 13%, and that's what she?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for purchasing. If someone could speak on the issue of whether or not this is covered under the purchasing policy that requires competitive bidding process for any contract over $5,000.
Hello, Stacy.
It is covered under the exceptions to competitive bid in Section 4.1B. If there exists a longstanding, successful relationship for services, and the knowledge gained through this relationship adds value and integral to the services provided, this may include fees for professional services and special services, excluding all contracted services, including legal services, accounting and auditing services, collection agency fees, expenses tied directly to the issuance of debt, expenses tied directly to investment services, and water rate analysis services.
Okay, so water rate services is specifically enumerated in the policy that this Board passed, which I voted no on.
Correct. That was back in May.
Mr. Chairman, one final comment. The township expends tremendous amount of public funds on professional services, and I believe that we're, the exceptions are swallowing the rule. The purpose of the purchasing policy is to determine fair market value through competitive bidding process, and the exceptions has turned it into a Swiss cheese. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the, that concludes my comments on this matter.
Anyone else? All right, hearing no more discussion. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to engage Utility Financial Solutions to update the Macomb Township Water and Sewer Department five-year projection and one-year rate design, in the amount of $17,000. The motion passes, five to two, with Trustee Cusmano and Treasurer Gillette voting no.
Thank you, Board.
Moving on to the Engineering Department. Item 13 is a request to schedule a public hearing for the street lighting SAD resolution for Stillwater Crossing Site Condominiums for September 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members. This is a request from a developer who is opening up a new phase of his development and is required to put street lighting in. This is, this will set up the special assessment district that's necessary for the township to collect the funds to pay DTE for the streetlights. We're recommending approval of the...
Schedule the hearing.
Yeah, yeah, the scheduled date, right.
That I'm the one that makes mistakes.
Yep.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to schedule the public hearing for the street lighting SAD for Stillwater Site Condominiums Phase III for September 2nd, 2021. Members, please vote.
22nd, 22nd.
September 22nd, 2021.
Sorry.
22nd.
I thought I missed it the first time, but I got the second time.
That motion passes unanimously. Item 14 is a request for consideration for township contribution to the Chelsea Park subdivision paving special assessment district for the road construction of Chelsea Park Drive, Yamsbury Drive, and Newcastle Court, up to the amount of $2,000, $250,000.
So moved. Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members. The township recently received a petition from some of the property owners within Chelsea Park subdivision to reconstruct the three streets that are noted in the agenda. That petition, as you'll see in the next agenda item, has overwhelming support. The cost of the project is currently estimated at $924,000. In an effort to reduce the cost to the residents through the special assessment district, the township has agreed to apply with the Macomb County Department of Roads for a 50% match through their 2022 subdivision reconstruction program, and that's up to $500,000. So roughly half the cost of what we're estimating would be covered by the county. The remainder would normally be part of a special assessment district that the township would charge the residents. However, this same subdivision came into the township about three years ago in 2018, wanting their roads reconstructed. They're in poor shape, and they could not get the number of signatures that were necessary, the 50%, to bring to the Board so that we could establish a special assessment district. It was too expensive. If I remember correctly, the cost was about $15,000 a parcel at that time. So they are now back to the township requesting that the township participate in the road reconstruction program. They're requesting 25% up to the $250,000 that's listed in the, on the agenda item. That would reduce the amount that the residents would pay to roughly $8,600, which is, obviously, with the percentage that the petition was signed, much more palatable to the residents. So the township has applied to SEMCOG for a, what's known as a Pazer Grant, that's a study that looks at all the roads within the township and grades them, so that we would know, once that's done, how bad the roads are and which ones are the worst. So if we wanted, if we got further requests like this in the future, we would be able to go to that and say, yes, this... to go to that and say, yes, this is definitely one of the roads that would qualify for the township match. However, we won't be able to do that until next year, and the deadline for the 2022 program is October 6 of this year. So in order for us to meet that deadline, we would have to make a decision now, essentially. So I included some pictures in the board packet. Anybody that's driven in that subdivision can tell that those roads are in really bad shape. So I'd also like the board to be aware that this is the first phase of a two-phase project. They do plan to come back next year and to try and maximize the amount of money that we're getting from the county. For Vintage Lane, which is in the middle of the sub, it's also in very poor shape. We're currently estimating that to be a $900,000 project, so it's very similar in cost to what this year's program is. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. So to add to that, just to give probably a little more background and context for this. So I think everyone who's been paying attention to the meetings has heard us having to deal with the county and how we participate in any road project that gets done in township. The township is required to participate at some level. The matching fund that they request is 50%. If we're somehow, like in the 23-mile road instance where we get state or federal funding, whatever the balance is, the county and the township participate 50-50. The same is true if any work is to be done on a subdivision street. It is true that the county is responsible for our roads. When those developments are first brought forward, when the project gets completed, the roads get dedicated to the county, and the county takes ownership of the roads. But despite that, we still cannot get any work done in our township, or in any township in Macomb County, in Oakland County, and anywhere in southeast Michigan, unless the municipality also participates in the cost of doing the work. These folks have been approaching the township for many years. They approached this board when it first was seated back in November. We've had ongoing discussions with them. We collectively have been working on this, and when I say collectively, the full times in our departments, trying to figure out a solution, because the way things are structured right now, and this is true for every township, the county has more roads than it will ever be able to maintain in the future, and that's just pure dollars and cents. We thought we could begin a program where we could try and at least blunt the worst of the damage, meaning we could at least help the residents address the worst conditions roads in the township. We visited Chelsea Park sub. We've also visited other subs where folks have called and complained about their roads. There is, this subdivision, these streets are unquestionably, and I would challenge anybody in the township to drive through this subdivision, unquestionably the worst roads in the township. It's clear that there was substandard material, or workmanship, or something that caused these roads to fail much sooner than they should have. We are proposing not only this, but internally, we are working on a policy to set, to try and set aside $250,000 every year, every budget cycle, and allow the residents to petition the township for participation in helping fix some of the roads. In the big picture, to fix a road, $250,000 is, I'm sorry, $250,000 is not a lot, and it doesn't go a long way. It is a huge amount of money. I don't want to pretend that it's not. But we felt this is something that we could do when we can afford it in any given year. So the policy is being written. We've gone over it with the attorney the last couple of days. We hope to have something that we can put out very soon, so that there will be very objective criteria. We're going to use the PESER study that Mr. Van Tiflin referred to as a way of measuring. We're going to make sure that it's first within the budget, in any budget year that we're going to be, open up the applications for. So there'll be a number of hurdles in any community that wants our participation and that has to, that are going to have to reach those thresholds in order to even qualify. But we're going to try and make it as transparent and as objective as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, Mr. Chair, if I could. First, I would like to note that the $250,000 on this item is within our existing budget, so we're not adding anything to our existing budget. Second, I'd like to concur with our chairman, or supervisor, rather, on his remarks. But I also like to point out that the county currently allocates $2 million to help with, to reconstruct subdivision roads in the county, in the townships in the county. That's $2 million countywide. And of that money, in the past few years, Macomb Township has gotten $0.00. And that's despite the fact that our residents are paying county taxes. So our residents pay county taxes. They're going to fix subdivision roads in other communities. What we're proposing here today is that we participate by contributing $250,000 in order to draw down half a million from the county. So it's a two-for-one deal. We pay 250, we get 500,000, and the residents pay 250,000 approximately to address these roads. So, you know, it just irks me to think that there's roads in Macomb Township that need to be addressed, and these are not roads that need potholes fixed or resurfacing. These are roads that are beyond normal repair. These are roads that need reconstruction in order to qualify for these funds from the county. So my hope is that we can continue this program so that our residents are getting some of that $2 million a year that they're helping pay for back here in Macomb Township, and that we develop a policy that's going to help us allocate those funds where they're absolutely most desperately needed. I believe that Chelsea Park, you know, stands out right now as unquestionably the, you know, most desperately needed subdivision roads in Macomb Township. So I would like to thank the supervisor, clerk, the rest of the board, our department heads, Mr. Van Tiflin, and everybody that was involved in helping move this project forward. There's no guarantee, even now, we have to submit the application in October, by October, to the county, and then we have to get chosen by the county among the other projects that are put forward throughout the county. So there's no guarantee, but this at least gives us a chance, rather than just paying in taxes every year to the county and receiving no chance of having any money returned back. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. I do want to add to one thing. The $250,000 number that we came up with internally as a maximum participation on behalf of the township is based on the fact that the county will max, will only put forth a maximum of half a million dollars to any one project in a subdivision. So we thought if they're willing to put up 500 at a max, we would be willing to put up as half of the potential match, which is 250. And the residents then would put up the other 250, you know, assuming it was a million-dollar project. The other thing I wanted to reiterate is what Mr. Van Tiflin said, that even though this particular subdivision is going to need two years to complete this whole project, there's no guarantee that the county will improve not only this one, they may not approve the second, approve the second one. If they go back through this process again, get their signatures again, and we submit to the county next year, they may not approve it. So all of this, even though we're doing our best to help out, all of this hinges on the county's ability and willingness to take on these projects.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I just want to add to all the comments that have been made this evening, as we attended a leadership breakfast last week, and Sterlingites had the luxury of bragging about all the money that they've invested in their roads and subdivisions. And that's because their state and federal funding goes directly to the city, and then they decide what roads and subdivision roads get fixed. They have that luxury to do that. Townships do not. Macomb Township Association tried to argue a bill that would allow the money to go directly to township so that they can manage their roads, infrastructure based on development, and subdivisions such as Chelsea Park. That did not pass. So we're trying to navigate around a system that doesn't allow us to use the money, as Mr. Gillette indicated, that the state and federal funding is allocated throughout several communities in Macomb County. So we're just trying to find ways to make this work for subdivisions such as Chelsea Park, and to try and navigate through our infrastructure difficulties with the funding that we have.
Mr. Supervisor, as I understood, the PESER study will qualify the roads from 1 to 10, one being the worst, and Chelsea Park qualified as number one.
We have not yet done the PESER study. We are, we are just now applying, we are applying for a grant that will pay for the PESER study. Once the PESER study is done, we will use it to assess future applications. This particular application, we are proposing to move forward on, call it a pilot program, if you wish, but objectively, subjectively, and then on any other standard we can apply, we know that Chelsea Park is the worst road in the township.
I can certainly attest to that because I'm right across the street from it, and I go by it every day, and I think, holy crow. Thank you for the correction.
Any other...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When I first read this on the agenda, I, I had a lot of concerns. I just thought that we might be opening up the floodgates to say, okay, anybody that wants their roads fixed, you know, come on down and collect a check for $250,000 towards it. Then you mentioned that we're going to have a policy in place to, you know, kind of use maybe the PESER study to decide who gets that money each year as we put it on the budget. So I would like to amend the motion, if possible, to include verbiage to say, you know, that the administration has a policy in place within the next, say, 30 days, you know, in order for me to feel comfortable voting on this.
Treasurer Gillette, would you amend your motion?
I'll accept that amendment, absolutely. So would your amendment, Trustee Lucido, would be to amend the motion to approve the item under the condition that the township have a policy prepared within the next 30 days and presented to the board
Correct.
to govern future allocation of subdivision road funding?
Correct, yes.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Just one quick question.
Can you...
All right.
Are you going to support the revised amendment?
Support, yes.
Okay.
My question was on that. Is this going to, would this stall any of this project at all?
If we wait for the, if we wait for the policy?
Yeah.
It would. That's why we're, the motion on the floor now is to approve this with the understanding that within 30 days, the administration will bring back a, a policy that will govern future allocations.
Mr. Chairman, actually, Treasurer Gillette said, as a condition. When you make it a condition, it means it has to be met first before you do the second part of it. So if it's a condition, then we would have to have the policy in place before the approval goes into effect. Whereas if it is a request from the administration to have a policy before the board within 30 days, that's a different story, because you can approve the request subject to administration being directed to provide a policy for review and approval by this board within 30 days. So that, I would ask that, if that's what the intent is, that that be specified versus making it a condition of approval.
If I could, I don't want to stall this. I just want to make sure that we don't open the floodgates going forward. I want to make sure that we get this real fit, because I've driven by there, and it is, it's embarrassing, actually. But I don't want to stall this, but I do want to make sure that we just have something in place before we get any other requests.
Treasurer Gillette, can you reamend your motion?
So I suppose the, to accommodate that would be to, as an, add an addendum to the item that, and, the township shall prepare a proposed policy that will be developed and presented before the board prior to any future and upcoming allocation of subdivision road funding. So that we will prepare that policy, but is that going to work?
Can you give me a shot at this?
Can't do much worse. Go ahead.
So it would be a motion to approve the request as presented, with the understanding and direction to the township administration to present a policy before the board within 30 days to set forth the parameters for future requests.
I think that's exactly what we both just said. Kind of, sort of, maybe, but...
Support.
All right.
And again, this is going to keep this thing rolling.
Yes, this will keep it moving. That's correct.
That's the intention that I have, absolutely.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, from my understanding, the motion is that this is a unique situation that's going to be a one-off, and that all the future transactions in this vein are going to be subject to the policy that's...
That is the intention. Although, I want to ask one question before I completely agree with that statement. Mr. Van Tiflin, if the PESER study grant is approved and we get it done, do you have any idea when it will be done by?
I guess I would have to have more information on what the parameters of the grant actually are in order to know that. But the intention would be to have it ready to go so that by next year, the deadline for the county's funding, that we would be able to meet that if we got another request in, obviously, this...
So there's a chance, just so the board understands, if the second phase of Chelsea Park were to come back to the board, based on the draft policy that we discussed in the last couple of days, the application for that would potentially be due at the end of this year. So the PESER study may not yet be complete, but we're still dealing with a unique situation in Chelsea Park where we know that their subdivisions are in terrible shape. However, the PESER study should be completed by the time we are making these votes to allocate these funds. So it may move along its track, the application process, without the PESER study being complete, but I believe we will have it before we fully commit to the funds being allocated. Do you think that's accurate, Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yeah, I think the idea would be to have it put into the budget and have the money available, and then, you know, when the PESER study is done, when the request comes in, evaluate it, bring it to the board, and get the board to approve it.
Understood.
But if I could ask a question?
Sure.
So essentially, that same opportunity or policy would apply toward the entire township.
Correct.
So other subdivisions could also begin going through the process, but by the time we vote, we should have the information available of how these roads rank, and then we can evaluate the applications.
There will be a challenge if multiple people submit next year in choosing which one to pursue, because that decision would have to be made probably by April or May.
Right, or, slight correction, which ones we may submit to the county. So it's possible we could submit three, and the county just selects one, potentially.
Potentially, that's true.
So we have to work that somehow into the, into the policy, how we would...
But if I could ask one more question. If we submit three, what if they do select two? Are we coming out of half a million now?
Before we go, before we go down that road, that's going to be a discussion about the policy. I just wanted to make the point that in the next year's budget cycle, we may have a project coming forward that does not yet have the PESER study completed, although the PESER study is intended to be finished as soon as we can practically get it done. Does that answer your question, Mr. Guzman?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make one other comment. I'm in support of this motion. It's a creative solution. It provides collaboration efforts within the subdivision in the township and the county, and it's a work in progress. If one version doesn't work, maybe it can be tweaked with a little bit more here or there. So I'm in favor of it because all residents of the township, in Macomb Township and townships generally face the same conundrum. There's no money, or enough money, on massive magnitudes exponential, to fix these roads. So it's either have the damage to your car and the potholes and diminution of your value of your home, or creative solutions. And I congratulate the administration and the department heads for working in this direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Any more discussion or questions from the board?
One last question to Mr. Van Tiflin. Out of the petition, what percentage was in favor of this?
82%.
Good.
With the township's participation.
And then, is there going to be a standard 10-year payback?
That will be farther down the line in the SAD process. So the township board will actually, during the roll hearing, you'll set the timeframe, the interest rate, all the parameters. But typically, it's a 10-year payback on a road project, yes.
Good. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
I have one further question. Can it be, is it typically, could it be extended out to make it more affordable for the...
The township board has that flexibility, yes.
Yes, okay.
The only caution that I would, I would give to the board is, the longer you make it, the more you may get into a situation where the road has started... the road has started to show its age and they're still paying for it. So it's a, it's a balancing thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any more discussion? All right, we have an amended motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido. I'll try and get it right, Tim, so correct me if I am wrong. To approve the township's contribution to Chelsea Park subdivision for the paving special assessment district for the road reconstruction of Chelsea Park Drive, Ashbury Drive, and Newcastle Court, up to $250,000. And to direct the administration to return to the board within thirty days with a formal policy for consideration to govern future allocations for subdivision road improvement.
Very good.
Yay me. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item fifteen, we have a request to accept the formal special assessment district petitions for Chelsea Park road replacement, Chelsea Park Drive, Amesbury Drive, and Newcastle Court. It's SAD number MA 101-P and adoption resolution number one. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, one comment. I have a note here that I forgot to add. I say this to the residents who have bad roads or deteriorating roads. Let your county commissioner know what's going on and also the county executive. I've said in the past that McComb Township is a very important political voting block and we should make our needs known to the administration at the county level so that we get what we're entitled to, which we haven't been getting in the past years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Cusmano. If there's no more discussion, clerk Posey, would please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. I'm sorry, that res-, that, what is it? That resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to item sixteen, is a request authorize, request for authorization to initiate the recruitment process for a township assessor. Is there a motion?
Support.
Mr. DeBaca.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. The human resource department is requesting authorization to initiate the recruitment process for the township assessor position. Mr. Dan Hickey, our current township assessor, has submitted his letter of intent to retire effective September tenth, twenty twenty-one. This position is covered under the Ask Me CBA under Local nineteen seventeen and would be posted in compliance with the requirements of the CBA. Thank you for consideration and this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. DeBaca. Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to authorize, to approve the authorization to initiate the recruitment process for a township assessor. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request for authorization to extend an offer of employment in the fire department. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Who got it first? Peter? Mr. DeBaca.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Human resource is requesting authorization to extend an offer of employment to George Marshall for full-time firefighter position. Back on July seventh, twenty twenty-one, the board gave HR authorization to extend an offer of employment to a candidate who accepted the position. Since then, that candidate has resigned. To fill that position, the selection committee is recommending George Marshall. George is one of eight, of the eight internal candidates that applied for the position. George has been a paid-on-call firefighter for McComb Township for the past three years. Again, this position was posted in compliance with the IAFF CBA agreement. Again, thank you for the consideration of this matter. If approved, George would start September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. DeBaca. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to authorize the HR department to extend an offer of employment to George Marshall for a position in the fire department. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Marshall. All right, moving on to item eighteen, is a deviation request for five-three-two-six-zero Springdale Street. The Meadows at Town Center, located north of Twenty-Four Mile Road, one-half mile east of Romeo Plank Road, permanent parcel ID number zero-eight, zero-nine, three-five-one, zero-nine-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. The property in question is located here in section nine in the township. They are in the Town Center District on Springdale Street. The ordinance limits them to a hundred and fifty square feet for an accessory structure. They were seeking a deviation for a one-hundred-and-sixty-five-square-foot shed or accessory structure. The Town Center Committee voted on August ninth to unanimously recommend approval of this deviation. And at this time, we are requesting the board to approve and grant that deviation.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusmano, to approve the deviation request for five-three-T, six, five-three-two-six-zero Springdale Street, permanent parcel ID zero-eight, zero-nine, three-five-one, zero-nine-five. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item eighteen, we have a request to approve conditional rezoning from residential urban one family, R1, to community facilities CF, located on the northeast corner of Twenty-One Mile Road and Card, permanent parcel number zero-eight, two-six, three-five-one, zero-one-one, and zero-eight, two-six, three-five-one, zero-one-two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. You may remember there were a couple conditional rezonings on the agenda at your last meeting as well. This is something relatively new to the township. It was adopted by the board last summer. It's not quite as simple as a traditional rezoning. It's, it's a rezoning that has conditions along with it that restricts what can and cannot be done on the property. The property in question tonight is on the northeast corner of Twenty-One and Card. They are seeking a conditional rezoning to the zoning category of community facilities. That is in order to construct and develop a childcare facility. They have imposed a number of voluntary conditions that include the fact that the property will only be developed as a childcare facility. Hours of operation will be six-thirty a.m. to six-thirty p.m. They have limited themselves on the number of students that can be enrolled amongst others. A site plan for this development was also approved by the planning commission, conditioned on the fact that this conditional rezoning is approved at tonight's meeting. And at this time, we are requesting that the conditional rezoning be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, if I could to Mr. Box. Josh, if, if we approve this conditional rezoning, will this have to then go back before the planning commission?
The conditional rezoning will not have to go back, no.
It will not have to go back, so once we approve it, it's, it's done. Is that because they've already approved the site plan essentially at the?
Correct.
Okay, so if the site plan's already approved and we.
The site plan was approved, conditioned on the fact that this is approved tonight. So if you were to not approve this, the site plan is also not approved.
Right.
But they, they were separate applications that came through the planning department at the same time.
So the site plan and this conditional that came through the planning commission, both at the, at the same time, so it doesn't have to go back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, treasurer Gillette. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusmano, to approve the conditional rezoning from R1 to CF for the corner of Twenty-One Mile and Card, permanent parcel IDs zero-eight, two-six, three-five-one, zero-one-one, and zero-eight, two-six, three-five-one, zero-one-two. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty, is a request to approve the final plot request for Harmony Acres subdivision number four, located on the south side of Twenty-Four Mile Road and one-half mile east of Romeo Plank, permanent parcel ID zero-eight, one-six, two-zero-zero, zero-one-seven. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. Harmony Acres is a, a single-family development located in south of Twenty-Four Mile, not far from here near Town Center. Development has, has completed a number of phases thus far and they are now seeking their, their final phase. And thus the approval of this final plot. The final plot will contain forty-three, uh, single-family units. All internal departments are recommending approval of this. And at this time, we're requesting that the final plot for Harmony Acres number four be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the final plot request for Harmony Acres Sub, parcel, permanent parcel ID zero-eight, one-six, two-zero-zero, zero-one-seven. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty-one, is a request to approve the preliminary plan for Wellington West, located on the south side of Twenty-Four Mile Road and the east, and east of Romeo Plank, permanent parcel ID zero-eight, one-six, one-zero-zero, zero, zero-three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. This is another single-family development located just south of here, south of Twenty-Four Mile, not far from Harmony Acres, which we just talked about. Wellington West is located, I think, two properties west of, of Harmony Acres. This, this development will have forty-nine units. It will not have direct access to Twenty-Four Mile. It will have access through Wellington Estates, but they will have an emergency access drive on Twenty-Four Mile. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this preliminary plan. And at this time, we're requesting that the preliminary plan for Wellington West be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by clerk Posey, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the preliminary plan for Wellington West, permanent parcel ID zero-eight, one-six, one-zero-zero, zero-three. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty-two, we have a request to promote a probationary paid-on-call firefighter. Chief, I'm sorry.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board.
What's that? Hold on, one second, chief.
Move, move.
My fault. Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, now, chief.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to promote probationary paid-on-call firefighter Dane Toko to the position of paid-on-call firefighter. He successfully completed his probationary period with the department and is recommended for promotion by the probationary development committee and myself. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, there's a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to promote Mr. Toko to, from the, from probationary paid-on-call firefighter. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
And with that, I'd like to invite firefighter Toko up to receive his helmet, shield, and badge. Mr. Supervisor, if I could just make two quick announcements. I am finally pleased to announce the ribbon-cutting for the new public safety building has been set. It will be September eighth at ten a.m. at the site of the new building. We'll have refreshments available after, along with tours of the facility. And the next morning on September ninth, at Station Two, at seven a.m., will be the kickoff for firefighter Joe Warren's one-hundred-and-forty-mile walk to Grand Rapids as he raises funds for firefighters battling cancer. So we're finalizing that program right now, but I can tell you that the Coast Guard has committed to doing a flyover on Twenty-Four Mile to kickoff as we help firefighter Warren walk down Twenty-Four Mile to Hayes. So we would invite everyone, parking will be at Twenty-One and Garfield in that Ace Hardware parking lot. Smart buses will transport everyone to Station Two since parking is limited. Those that want to join in on the walk from Station Two to Hayes will then be brought back by smart buses to their vehicles at Twenty-One and Garfield. So we would ask any resident or anyone else that would like to join us to please be at Station Two no later than seven a.m. as we have to be on time to make sure that we are in line with the Coast Guard flyover. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to item twenty-three, we have a request to approve payment to Metro Controls, Inc. for an emergency condenser repairs and compressor replacements in the amount of nineteen thousand and fifty-three dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Mr. Gelli.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor Viviano, and good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to request approval to pay for an emergency repair to one of the air conditioning units at Town Hall. Two of the four compressors had failed and needed to be replaced. The total for this emergency repair was nineteen thousand fifty-three dollars. And the cost breakdown was provided in your packet, which was based on the current HVAC contract timing material cost. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gelli. Any questions or discussion?
This would be for air conditioning in the Town Hall, essentially?
Yes, for the south side. South side of the building.
Which I guess we need, I guess.
Well. Abatable.
I'm just going to say I'm fully in favor of this because it's been a little stuffy on the south side.
Usually is, usually is.
Chairman, I have a couple questions. Is there, we're talking about a, a Paser study and also raiding the roads and are there, is there any raiding or to determine whether or not these compressors are aging out to avoid an emergency repair situation?
The compressors, these were the last two compressors that were, have not been replaced. So all of the compressors in all four, or I'm sorry, in both units have been replaced now. So to answer your question, I'm guessing another eight to ten years for the compressors. That's not to say that the units are going to last that long, but the compressors will.
So is it a fair statement that basically when the building doesn't cool down quick enough and people begin to complain that that's when the, triggers an inspection? Is that what happens or is there a routine inspection along the schedule?
The units are inspected twice a year by the contractor who comes out and does regular maintenance.
All right, all right, that answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any more questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the payment to Metro Controls in the amount of nineteen thousand and fifty-three dollars. Members, please vote.
I was thinking about air conditioning.
That motion passes unanimously. You might lose your office if you do that. Moving on to item twenty-four, is a request to award the backflow prevention device testing and repairs contract to Allied Building Services of Detroit in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for a three-year contract, which equates to a ninety dollar in the first year and ninety-five dollars in subsequent years per device price. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Mr. Gelli.
Thank you again, supervisor and board members. I am requesting authorization to award the contract for backflow prevention device testing and repairs to Allied Building Services Company of Detroit at a cost of ninety dollars per device for inspection, testing, tagging, and reporting. For the first year, ninety-five dollars per device for the second and third year with two additional one-year options. device for the second and third year, with two additional one-year options, which covers 31 backflow devices the township currently has. The total cost for the contract for all three years, based on 31 devices, is $8,680. This contract would also include their normal hourly rates of $75 for general labor repairs and $95 for master plumber and journeyman repairs, not covered in the inspections. This bid was placed on mitten with one bid submitted. I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gelli. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What is the current rate or cost for this service? Do we have, or is this a new requirement that we're doing?
It's not a new requirement. We haven't had it done in the last couple of years, so I don't currently have a number for you.
What's the reason why we're having it done? Is there some regulation?
There is. There's a, every, each device is different, or not each device, most of the devices have different requirements, whether they're one year or three years, I think, that they have to get done. I'm trying to get them all on one schedule, which they haven't been able to do up to this point.
So, I can, I know in a commercial setting, having managed commercial buildings, that normally these are annual reports that you send in, required by the municipalities that they're in, to make sure that your water system isn't backflowing into the general main by accident, pulling in whatever happens to be attached to your mains or to your lines in the building. So, I don't know why, I actually don't know why we don't have it annually, all the time. If there are some, something different about some of our backflows, it might be larger or more complicated piece of equipment.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, then, that this is for the township buildings. Is the same requirement required of commercial buildings in McComb Township, you know?
The Building Department.
It's a Building Department question, but I believe it is.
Because we'd be the municipality this Board would be.
I know that it's required in every other municipality where I've had a building. I can't imagine we're any different. But I've never asked the question.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can tell you the story about getting a $300 ticket for not having a backflow preventer on a faucet that wasn't even attached to a live water source in Detroit Eastern Market. But, okay, so, my understanding is, do you know who requires the backflow preventers to be installed on those 31 locations from McComb Township?
I believe that's Building Department or Water and Sewer. I'm not sure.
Okay.
One of the two.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmano. Any more questions? Okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the backflow prevention device testing and repairs contract in the amount of $8,880 for a three-year contract. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And moving on to item 25 is a request to award the contract for custodial services with Masters Maintenance in the amount of $124,959 annually, and it's a two-year contract. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. DeCaro.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board Members. Parks and Recreation, Water, and Sewer Departments are requesting permission to enter in a contract for custodial services at the Rec Center and the Water and Sewer Offices. This item was placed on mitten. We received four bids ranging from $126,735.20 to $381,972. The lowest bidder cannot meet the qualifications to successfully perform the necessary duties. The second lowest bidder, who is our current contractor, asked to be removed from consideration. This time, we're recommending that Master Maintenance get the contract for a cost of That cost is for two years. There is a renewal clause for up to two additional years. I've included the bid tabulations, as well as the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialists, and we are both available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Can you comment as to why the lowest bidder was not selected?
They did not have the, they only had five members to their staff. Their plan would have been to put one person in the Rec Center.
So, they weren't, so in the end, they were not a qualified bidder. They were unqualified.
That's correct. That's correct. We requested three people per evening.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. DeCaro?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, and I apologize not getting these over to you earlier.
That's okay.
What is the current cost per year for this service?
For our, again, this is two buildings, but for our building, we're paying $70,000 per year.
And is there a COVID pandemic exit clause if the surge of infections goes up and we are forced to close by Health Department orders?
Is there a clause in the contracts? I don't believe so, is there, Tim? I don't.
There's nothing specific to the COVID clause, but there is a force majeure.
Okay. And you believe, as legal counsel of the township, that that would provide us with an option of not having to pay for services that we're not receiving?
I do believe that, but we can review that and potentially make that specific change with regard to COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmano. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the custodial services contract to Masters Maintenance in the amount of $124,959 annually. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Moving on to public comment, this is for non-agenda items. There is a three-minute time limit. If you have something to say, please approach the podium, and if you have participated remotely, please digitally raise your hand. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Jeff Yark, 35545 Pound, Richmond, Michigan, but also Jeff, State Rep., 33rd House District, includes most of the McComb Township, with the exception of the four square miles on the southwest corner. That's why I said, making my periodic stops around the nine communities in my district, just to make sure I keep in touch with the various issues that are coming up. I do want to compliment, things are going well in McComb. I appreciate that. A few weeks ago, I did a listening tour in McComb Corners Park. It was a really nice event. I have some compliments of the park. You know, I want to acknowledge all the frontline workers that have gone through dealing with the pandemic. But, you know, I think one thing that is also forgotten is that all the elected officials that ran for office typically did not know that there was gonna be a pandemic, what they were gonna be faced. So, I want to say I appreciate all the issues that the local government officials took on, that probably never realized what they would be walking into. I know my office, for example, you know, unfortunately, because of failed UIA, I, you know, you may get my staff, or you may be getting me on the phone helping you. I was serving our citizens also. Interesting, you brought up the issue about roads. Briefly, I would just say that I'm very sensitive to the issue of roads. Act 51 is really geared against more urban areas. We actually have, McComb County has about 8.7% of the population. I have to see with the new census numbers, but we get about 7% of the money. So, we actually lose about $22, $23 million that goes to other parts of the states, other state, and I will say that I've done a number of bills to try to fight that issue, including keeping registration fees in the county that they originated, looking at lane miles versus centerline miles, which disproportionately hurts our mileage. I think Clerk Posey brought up the issue of allowing townships to take jurisdiction on those roads. That's a bill that I've had, that, you know, it's, haven't come up to a vote trying to get that through committee. I haven't reintroduced that this term yet. Have another number of issues also because of the, you know, pandemic to address, but that is on my radar to address that piece also, because I know how sensitive that issue is. I just want, again, want to make clear that I am available to any of the township residents or to the Board. I have 17 years of local government experience, so I'm definitely sensitive to the issue of local government, and I'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Yark, and we appreciate you always taking our calls. Anyone else? Mr. Ivanowski, anyone digitally?
Nobody on my server.
No one else wishes to make public comments? So, we are moving on to board comments. Trustee Oliver.
Just one. Just to, again, thank you, everyone that worked in our township, all our staff on Chelsea Park. It was, it's a big event. It really is. And even the residents that walked the petition, that's generally heartbreaking sometimes, too, so. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Kuzmano.
No comments this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzmano. Trustee Lucido.
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers.
Yes, I too would like to congratulate the administration here for the vision and forward planning that is, hopefully, fingers crossed, gonna make a big difference with Chelsea Park.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Treasurer Gillette.
I have no comments.
Clerk Posey.
No comments.
Well, I have a couple of comments. I do want to bring up just a brief update. Our, since we passed our marijuana ordinance, speaking to the chief today, we have pulled 14 homes, we have removed the meters from their homes because they were, either had already caused the fire or were a risk at causing a fire. It's 14 houses that were illegally growing marijuana in our township that were no longer able to do so. We are steadily making progress. We're working to, you know, address anywhere between eight and, four and eight homes a week. Those residents who continue to ignore our new ordinance run the risk of losing their power. It has been exceptionally hot, as a few people have found out, making life in that house a little bit uncomfortable. It's just not something that we can tolerate. It is, if anyone has seen the damage that some of these homes endure because of this operation and what the neighbors have to live with, it's considerable. And in one case, just this, the week before last, we were alerted where a pedestal exploded near where a mother was setting up a slip and slide for her children. The mother was in the process, I think roughly 10 feet away, I was told, setting it up. Had this exploded just a few minutes later, her children would have possibly been in the direct line of debris coming off of this, off of this pedestal. It had scorch marks on it, the moiers were melted. And I've said this before, I've said this to people directly, and I've said it from this chair, running this kind of power through residential homes is dangerous, and these people are risking killing themselves, their families, and their neighbors. It's something we're gonna continue to monitor, and I hope all of those who are participating in this activity, you know, ultimately choose to move on from McComb Township. There's other communities and there's other areas that are just better suited for it. So, the other thing I do want to mention is our library is gonna be opening soon. We hope everybody takes the opportunity to come out. It's on September 19th. Get that on your radar. And with that, I guess...
Is that a Sunday, Mr. Chair?
I think that is a Sunday.
Motion to adjourn.
I had a few follow-up questions.
All in favor? Motion in support.
No one supported your motion.
Yes.
Oh, you seconded it?
Thank you so much.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Can you send the vote, please?
No. All right, all in favor? Members, please vote. What time is it?
7:52.
Three.
It was two.
I said four. What is it officially? Have all members voted? Not yet, not until it comes up on my screen. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:53.